Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We're going to invite troop sixty-one to do the flag salute.
Troop sixty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five.
How about guys?
Uh, please stand for federal police.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Okay, item one, five G draft ordinance.
Mr. Connors, did you want to talk on behalf of that where we're at with this?
Um, yeah, in places of government body, you have before you the proposed ordinance with regard to the regulation.
They don't have copies of it right now.
You will have before you a draft copy of an ordinance with regard to the regulation of the five G. As you know, municipalities are going to be required as a result of the five G evolution to be able to regulate the construction and installation of five G small cell units which may appear throughout the township at some point if you would receive an application. The ordinance is quite comprehensive. It sets standards. The Federal Communications Act requires that these standards be in such a manner as that they do not effectively prohibit the placement of the small cells network, but you are allowed to reasonably regulate them in a manner that's consistent with any other utility that might utilize the right of way within the municipality. There are fees that are established within the ordinance to cover the cost of the review of both the master plan for a five G network if it were to be installed, as well as the individual site locations within the municipality. The ordinance will be presented to you for your consideration so that you may introduce it if satisfied with the ordinance at the next township committee meeting.
Any questions? Move it along.
All right, that's all I have on this agenda. I don't think anybody else has any add-ons, do they?
No.
So can I have a motion to adjourn this agenda?
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, did each young man want to leave or are they going to stay?
Yeah, we're going to excuse ourselves. We're just waiting for them. And if you see how they they have to make a move, uh, movement, something that they all have to agree or someone wanted to vote. We'll talk about that. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with that.
Good luck.
Thank you, Sean. You sit in your chair.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. While you're on, please rise and set the flag. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty fourteen, creating chapter two thirty-six of the municipal code to prohibit the sale and dispensation of marijuana. In order to the township Lacey County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the township code of the township of Lacey so as to establish new chapter two three six marijuana to prohibit the sale and dispensation of marijuana in the township of Lacey. This is creating chapter two thirty-six as it relates to recreational marijuana. This is first reading. Can we have a motion to adopt or any questions?
Move it.
Second.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yeah, yes for the comment. Um, you know, we were going to adopt an ordinance pertaining to this several weeks ago and I'm glad that we we stepped back, we took a deep breath, um, conferred with our attorney, looked at what the possible, um, non-binding referendum question would be coming up and made a determination to do this. So I'm very happy we were able to do that and move forward intelligently. So my my vote is yes, thank you.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Item two, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty sixteen, re-appropriating excess bond fees in order to finance the cost of emergency service radios.
In order to the township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, re-appropriating one hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-two cents in excess bond proceeds not needed for their original purposes in order to finance the cost of various improvements in capital equipment acquisitions for the township's fire company, first aid, emergency squads, and police department authorized in and by the township of Lacey and the county of Ocean. This is taking an old bond ordinance. Most of the money that was remaining in that bond ordinance would eventually have been canceled. It was from like road, uh, old road projects. What happens is you go out to bid for a road project and it's, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars, but the final quantities might come in less, so you have decreases, but you had borrowed the money based on the original contract. So the twenty thirteen bond ordinance, which we would be due to cancel, still had a hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-two cents, which we had already borrowed. You can't do that on non-borrowed money and we're just re-appropriating it for this other purpose. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty seventeen, authorizing the sale of a portion of block eleven twenty-nine, lot twenty.
In order to the township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the sale of a portion of block eleven twenty-nine, lot twenty, in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen B five. This is a portion of a one acre lot that we're selling to the adjoining property owner. A survey has been performed and a meets and bounds description. We're selling it for twelve thousand dollars. It's about a twenty-five by a hundred parcel. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty fifteen, amending chapter three thirty-five, zoning of the municipal code so as to establish medical cannabis dispensaries in the M-one business park zone.
In order to the township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three thirty-five of the township code of the township of Lacey entitled zoning as to establish medical cannabis dispensaries as a permitted use in the M-one business park zone. This is for the, um, business park. This is allowing for medical cannabis dispensary.
Second reading, I'll open it up to the public. Come on up.
Regina descends a Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach speaking as a private citizen. I have a question. I heard some of this, the discussion about this at a previous meeting, but I was just wondering, did a lot of people complain that they had to travel so very far to get their medical marijuana that we have to sell it here in Lacey for them? Because I know a lot of people that do use it and they don't mind obviously going to get it where they're going to get it.
Mayor?
What's that?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
Well, the point being, and and one of the reasons that I'm in favor of it, is not so much the inconvenience, but had we not zoned it, it doesn't, it's basically by zoning it, it stops someone from coming in and seeking a variance and then if we deny them anywhere they want.
Oh, so you just.
So now we say is zoned in the business park.
Right.
So that's the main reason.
We've had some inquiries.
So this is to make it really.
About possibly doing it here.
Right.
We don't want it on the Lacey corner.
Right, so this is to make it in a specific place.
Exactly.
And that's the reason why we're doing most of the marijuana stuff now specifically for zoning purposes.
All right, I'm just not thrilled about it, but that's.
Some of us aren't either, but.
Thanks for explaining.
Anything else from the public?
See if you can make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Call in favor? Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes for the comment. Um, up until now, the closest place I believe is Little Lake Harbor and on Tuesday, Waretown, huh?
Egg Harbor.
Egg Harbor, okay, Egg Harbor, better. And then Tuesday, Waretown passed their zoning, so now they'll be zoning there. So, you know, Waretown, Lacey, you know, it's, it's, it's a reality that's coming. Just like we believe that's a reality that recreational marijuana is coming and that's why we took the steps that we did tonight. So my vote's a yes with that comment.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yeah, no votes, no.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Did I call you? Yes, I did call him, Mr. McDonald. Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty one ninety-six, appointing a part-time recycling attendant.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the employment of Kenneth Home as a part-time recycling attendant for the township of Lacey. This is a three-day-on, three-day-off program, um, rotating between two gentlemen for the recycling position in the recycling center. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one ninety-seven, transferring an employee to the Police Records Bureau.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the lateral transfer of Crystal Conity from Clerk Two in the Tax Assessor's Office to the Police Department Records Bureau effective August seventeenth. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one ninety-eight, promoting Lynn Talarico to the position of Administrative Secretary.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, promoting Lynn Talarico provisionally to the position of Administrative Secretary pending promotional procedures for the township of Lacey.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one ninety-nine, authorizing agreement with the county of Ocean for leaf and vegetative waste composting program.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local service agreement with the county of Ocean for the Ocean County Leaf and Vegetative Waste Composting Program.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two hundred, authorizing the CARES Act reimbursement agreement with the county of Ocean.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the CARES Act reimbursement agreement with the county of Ocean. This is related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the county will be reimbursing us for allowable expenses outside of what FEMA reimburses us.
Motion?
Motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty two oh one, awarding a contract for the purchase of rock salt.
Resolution awarding a contract, uh, resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of rock salt to Atlantic Salt Incorporated and the purchase of pretreated rock salt to Chemical Equipment Labs of Delaware Incorporated. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh two, awarding a contract for the maintenance dredging of Wardens Oyster Pond.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, awarding a contract for the Wardens Oyster Pond maintenance dredging to Albert Marine Construction. The amount is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. We had an initial engineering estimate of two hundred thousand dollars, so this came in under that. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
So we want, so this, this dredging is, they will complete the dredging in the township for some time. Is that correct?
I'm hoping, um, for at least until twenty twenty-four, when we would be starting over again.
Starting over. A little while.
Yeah, I'm thinking twenty twenty-four, we'll be starting again at the south end of town.
Nice. So yes. Resolution twenty twenty two oh three, authorizing an agreement with the county of Ocean for the municipal alliance program.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing execution and grant agreement with the county of Ocean for the municipal alliance program. This is for the fifth quarter. So this is, um, what they, they would call, um, the fifth quarter or fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So we're getting from Dieter funds, eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Cash match from the township is two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents and the in-kind services in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh four, authorizing a special, special item in the budget for the stormwater mapping grant.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the twenty twenty municipal budget of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. We had received a grant from the DEP, um, for stormwater mapping expansion and the amount of seventy thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh five, authorizing a special item in the budget for the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the twenty twenty municipal budget of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. This is the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund and unfortunately, some of this is affected by COVID right now. We're only receiving two thousand dollars, forty-nine cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh six, authorizing a special item in the budget for the Clean Communities Program.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the twenty twenty municipal budget of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. This is the annual Clean Communities Grant Program that we receive. The amount we're receiving is seventy thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh seven, authorizing a special item in the budget for the municipal alliance program.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the twenty twenty municipal budget of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. Municipal Alliance, um, on alcohol, alcoholism and drug abuse, two thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. That's the remainder from the county for this year.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh eight, authorizing the placement of a lien on block eight oh three, lot fifteen, for property maintenance.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, accepting certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at seven-ten Biospirit Point and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs, the amount of eighty dollars and thirty-two cents. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two oh nine, authorizing the placement of a lien on block fifteen, forty-nine, lot forty-six, for property maintenance.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at eight-twenty Alpine Street and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs, the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two ten, authorizing the release of a performance bond for road opening permit number four eight three two.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by G. Dellis for road opening permit four eight three two at two-eleven Clearwood Drive. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two eleven, authorizing the refund of building department permit fees.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department. This is in the amount of two hundred and eighty dollars. It was for a solar project that was canceled.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two twelve, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund that deposits help for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two, uh, two thirteen, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of ten million, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, three hundred and, no, ten million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
With abstentions.
Second on B zero four zero zero and U four four nine nine.
Thank you. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
And Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Monthly reports.
Okay. Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of July collected receipts in the amount of twenty thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Municipal Court for the month of July, uh, month of June, excuse me, was collecting the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. Road opening permits for the month of June was in the amount of nine thousand, twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Recycling commodity in the amount of two thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents and truck parking in the amount of two thousand dollars, all for the month of June. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Oh, wait, wait, I have one more, sorry, one more. Community development, that must have came in late. For the month of July, they have receipts in the amount of eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. To accept the reports is read?
Move it. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a second on that because Mr. Dykoff needs abstain. So can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
And you abstained, okay.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty?
Move it.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Abstain.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of July ninth, twenty twenty?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of July ninth, twenty twenty?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Raffle License Amendment for the BPOE Lacey Outs Lodge two five one two?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee?
Can I do an add-on?
Add on.
It's an ordinance. Uh, this is first reading. It's in order to the township of Lacey County, Volusia State, and New Jersey, authorizing the exchange of properties pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash sixteen. We have three 40 by 100 lots in the redevelopment area for Phase 3 of Walters Development Group. We are swapping the property owner, Jeff German, three other 40 by 100 lots in the Barniget Pines to make that consideration. So can I have a motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Yes, Phase 3 of Port Hause. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
No.
You threw me off here now. Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just want to thank DPW for what they did after the storm. The town was cleaned up and just really seemed, they started that day, they went on from there, and there's some great people in that back building. Virtually every part of our town got touched. Ninety-five hundred people about lost power, and most of that was cleaned up with power back on in 24 to 36 hours. There were police officers at every major light directing traffic, preventing accidents, so we just got some proactive, great employees in town, and we all mentioned them because we all appreciate them, and I'm just saying thank you. Moving on to recreation, there's been 20,000 in revenue so far from the Whippet. We should show a small profit this year, notwithstanding a little bit of damage that was had by the Whippet and Lake Barniget over there, thanks to the windstorm. So it's been however, 2020, man, I just can't wait till this year is behind us. We will be having a 5K for municipal alliance. That's going to happen on August 22. Please see facebook.com/leacyrec for details. And I'd like to close with, just remember that elections have consequences. jurisdictions like New York City have officials that said no to the 40,000 jobs that Amazon would have brought. Now you see Governor Cuomo calling wealthy people, asking them to come back to float the tax base. I would implore our Governor Murphy in the kindest way possible. It's been several months since our lockdown in some way, shape, or form. Please understand that added unemployment equals increased tax revenue. It's been long enough, Governor. Please hear our voices and bring some help to our people. We've been very proactive, my colleagues and I and our community development in streamlined bureaucracy. That'll continue, but we need help from Governor Murphy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pete. Communion Giuliano.
Thank you, Mayor. After Communion Curatolo, thank you to the Lacey Township Police Department for handling all the situations during the storm, as well as DPW, what a great job they did. Town was totally cleaned up, I seen the trucks that they were going, and people have made a lot of comments that how good of a job we all did. So I want to thank everybody for that, all the departments. Saturday, I had the honor to go to the Fork River Fire Company barbecue, which was outside. Great time, them guys are, you know, thank you, Kevin, make sure you tell them thank you very much. I appreciate it being there, as all of us did, and, you know, what you gentlemen do over there is well, thank you. Since, I had to write myself notes, you know, I'm getting older, I guess. I don't know, what do you think, Mr. Connery? Am I getting older? Now I'm getting better, right? Since the last, just right before the last meeting of school, I guess we're, are we going to open up schools? I guess we're, they're thinking about that. So I just wanted to thank the staff and the students for everything they've gone through and are going through to get this job done. When and if it does happen, I'm hoping that it is. So I want to welcome them back and thank the Board of Education for all their hard work during the trying times, so I'm sure it hasn't been easy on all of yous. Am I right, Regina?
It's been a fun growing.
Right? Good job, though. Just stick up for them because they deserve to go back to school and get in their classroom and learn the correct way. That's about all I have, Mayor. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. I'd also like to echo the sentiments of Community Curatolo about DPW. Did a great job as always. You know, it's interesting, I remember during Sandy and many people put their, you know, their lives out on the curb. And many municipalities were wondering what they should do, and we didn't wonder, we immediately told, instructed our departments to get out there and help the people. And, you know, we'll worry about it later, and that's what we did, and I'm very happy about that. I also attended the Fork River Fire Company swearing-in slash barbecue, it was a great, a great event. It was, it was nice to see everybody and, just like having the Boy Scouts here, Cub Scouts, rather.
Cubs.
Cub Scouts, Cub Scouts. I was, I should know this. Nice to see some normalcy. Really, they were happy to get out there, and I don't know if anyone overheard, but this is the first time they had seen each other since this all began. So they're all starting to get out there, and hopefully, school's starting and some semblance of normalcy will come back and everyone can get through this. I keep on saying these two shall pass, but it's not passing, so I just, I just don't know. Finally, on Monday, we had a planning board meeting, and we had heard of minor site plan application from Holtech, and it's something that came before us a number of months ago, and something that's been ongoing, and it pertained to the spent fuel that's on-site. And when I say on-site, there's two aspects to it. There's the spent fuel casks that sit on concrete pads, and then there's the hot rods, the rods that are in the cooling tower of the pool. And basically, what they need to do is, they need to put additional concrete and steel casks on the pads so they can move those rods from that tower into those casks. And there's been a lot of rumors going around that we're going to be a repository for other municipalities and states, and that nothing is farther from the truth. And without going into detail, I urge everyone to do a little bit of homework. What that would take would be a special federal and state license called an interim service facility permit. And right now, Holtech, which is one of the leaders in the world on that, is, is in the process of applying for one in New Mexico. And so if that's not happening, again, they don't have the capacity at Oyster Creek, and it just wouldn't happen. What, what did happen, we were unable to, to hear the complete application because Open Public Meeting Acts require that we open it to the public. And because of the governor's guidelines, we're only allowed 25 people in a room. When you take into account the planning board members and the professionals and the applicants, we were, we had 22 up here and then three members from the public, and then we had another 25 downstairs. And, you know, technology being the way it is, we weren't able to clearly communicate with, with those people downstairs. And, and our attorney wisely advised us and the applicant that we should carry it. And so what we did was, we are having a special meeting on August 24 at Gilly Park. Because, of course, outside, you know, there are, there are limitations, but I don't believe we'll be exceeding those limitations. So that'll be, give everyone an opportunity to come out and hear and ask questions, and I know there were concerns, but this is, you know, we had the same application. Give him. Thank you. We had the same application in 2010, and actually, this all began in 1994. Mr. McDonald, 1994?
93.
93, where the owner or operator then, might have been Amergen, I'm really not sure, had come before the Board of Adjustment for a variance to place casks on that property. And then they had to come back again in 2010 for an expansion or another pad. Now, this is all due to the fact that the federal government didn't do their due diligence and, and license a permanent repository, which would have been yuck a mountain. So we're, we're stuck with it for a while, but all the professionals have assured us, and the science tells us that this is safe. We're still fighting for our fair share, and we're still fighting to get rid of it. And we are doing our due diligence as a township, as professionals, to make sure that anything that's built is safe. And then Holtech follows all the policies, procedures, and rules and regulations as they pertain to land use and NRC safety. And that's about all I have tonight. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Communion McDonald.
Thank you. Yeah, July 31st, I extended the, my wife and I went to the Bliden movie down here on Jones Road. And it was a good time. I think there's about 170 cloud cars, and if you figure a minimum of two people per car, it's a good turnout for that. And then I just also want to announce that we're having a country concert down on Jones Road on August 28. But you gotta be in your cars to meet the requirements. So you get the tickets through the Recreation Department. I also was down at the installation picnic for Fork River Fire Company. Just, as always, you guys put on a great job, doing a good job. The DPW, the police during the storm. Again, you guys set the standard for the county. You guys just do it. It's just absolutely amazing. Last thing I want to talk about is what happened yesterday with New Jersey Supreme Court. And $9.9 billion they're going to allow under this craziness to raise without our vote, which is, you know, technically, we're supposed to vote as, as a, as a state. They found a way to weasel around it, and they did it, and it's, you know, just, the state of New Jersey right now has $200 billion in debt. Cost us about $75 million just to cover the debt. So now we're going to go to $210 billion. We're, if you go to look on anything, it's the worst state for their bond ratings. This is not a good thing, and we're going to have to pay this back. Sooner or later, we're going to have to pay this back. And the estimates I saw were like $45 billion because of the way the interest is. So again, this comes down to the elections. You gotta get out and vote. And this governor's going to do it by mail. So make sure that you, if you have any questions, call the election board to, to get the answers to how to do this right, because this is way, way too important. This is a huge, huge problem. And New York's still trying to figure out the primaries. Forty thousand votes with 25,000 votes got tossed out or something. California did the same thing. So this is, this all comes down to, the people speaking up, and they speak up through the voting, through the voting process. So I, I would, you know, get on top of this. We'll, we'll be talking more about this as we go through our meetings. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. As everybody said up here, we all attended the swearing-in for the Fork River Fire Company. It was actually a great change of venue from our, from the normal captain's inn. So I really appreciated being invited and was able to be there for, you know, the outside barbecue. I've been appointed to the Oyster Creek Safety Advisory Panel formed in 2019 by Governor Murphy. I'm still trying to find out who, who appointed me. I think the DEP did. Congressman Kim had called me and told me I was appointed, but I don't think he appointed me. But, so anyway, if anybody has any questions or comments regarding the decommissioning process, as Mark said, I urge everybody to do some of their own homework first. A lot of the information is available on, online, everywhere, and, you know, we have a lot of the information. But if anything, any further questions or comments, I guess you can direct it to me or get them to Veronica, and I'll do my best to get them answered. I continue to be on the governor's conference calls every other Tuesday. Myself and pretty much all the other mayors on the call are continuing to advocate on behalf of the businesses that are still closed. And finally, I think it's disgraceful that the rioting is still occurring in some American cities. Chicago had over 100 people arrested last week due to rioting. Portland is still undergoing rioting, and I do not understand why the citizens in those cities and the states are tolerating that behavior and are not putting more pressure on our elected officials. So with that, I'll open it up to the public. Regina?
Regina descends to Sunset Dry Sunrise Beach, speaking at the private citizen. Thank you for commenting on the planning board meeting Monday night, but I was very disappointed in the manner in which it was held because I was one of the people stuck outside in the heat till 7 o'clock. And I came early at 6, hoping to get in before 6:30. I had a cold drink, I wasn't uncomfortable, but the older folks that were left outside in the heat were mighty uncomfortable. And, I mean, some of the people that were left outside were 70 and 80 years old, and everybody had questions. And then when we finally did get in, so many of us were put downstairs, and I was one of the people, we couldn't hear a thing. And then between the masks and the poor audibility, no one was able to see the plans, you had to be up here to see them. So I'm glad you have the larger venue now, and hopefully, everybody will be able to see what's been going on, and...
That is the governor's fault.
Oh, without a doubt, I mean, because we just got, you know, messed up for Monday night, we're going virtual. So I'm glad the meeting's held over to the 24th. Now, when did they call you and tell you we were appointed to the advisory committee?
Two weeks. Well, yeah.
Today, yesterday?
Andy Kim called me about two weeks ago, but then...
Oh, it was a couple of weeks ago already?
Well, no, I don't know.
Yeah, about two weeks ago, we got the call that he was being considered for the appointment.
Uh-huh.
And then it was official like two days ago.
Official, okay. Do you know how many people are going to be on that?
I think just...
Only five?
It's on the...
Is it on the website?
The mayor pretty much had to beg to get a position on that because there was no representation from Lacey.
Right, I know, I know, I can't believe it.
There was a superintendent of state police, or, no, it's going to be designees, but the head of the DEP...
So the other people are probably not from Lacey?
Nobody's from Lacey.
Except...
Oh, my gosh.
That, at the time, when I was mayor last year, I think it was the springtime, Mr. Connery's and myself, Mr. Rumpf and Mrs. Grove were on that call, I believe, with Congressman Kim about setting this up because he had just put the superintendent of police and a couple other people, only three. And we advocated to get somebody on from Lacey to represent.
And Chris, you didn't get on it either?
I wouldn't be appointed on it.
You wouldn't be able to?
No. So we wanted somebody from Lacey, and we advocated for that because we are the host, host town, so, so I guess it goes to the mayor. Lucky Steve.
Lucky Steve. I got nothing else to say.
Oh, yeah, I know, we're all like so busy.
Chris Steve loves meetings.
Doing nothing.
Says, boy, I wish I had a meeting today.
You know, I'll keep, I'll keep the movement along.
This is my party today, but that's okay. Mr. Giuliano, thank you for your accolades, but I'm not supposed to, you know, say anything as a board member.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Sande, anything else?
Shane Allen, I live 58 Salt Spray Drive in Fork River. Sent an email out this week, just trying to learn something, a little bit about the process in terms of... Trying to learn, sent an email out this week to a couple of folks regarding a BMX racing track in town, and I didn't know how you, or how I, or how one would go about starting such a facility.
Do you have a piece of property? I sent you back an email, and the town doesn't have that kind of property.
And, and that's, and I didn't know how it happened, so I just...
And I did tell you that Waretown had one at one time, and it only lasted maybe a year or two.
Say again?
Waretown, the town next door to us, south of us, did have a BMX racing track, it was privately held.
Right.
They had all kinds of professionals and, you know, named people there, and it only lasted about two years. There wasn't a draw to it for it around here.
It's a shame, I, I, my son and another guy in the neighborhood just coincidentally met up at a track, and, and there's another kid who's in like 4th grade now, and we travel all the way down to Egg Harbor or up to Howe for tracks. You know, we're, we're stuck right in the middle, there's one other track in the Hunterdon County. But we, we caught the bug, or he caught the bug in light of social distancing and coronavirus and everything that's going on. And he's a football soccer guy and a wrestler, and, you know, what do you do with an eight-year-old, you know? And, you know, we're riding bikes over, I think it was called Devil's Pit or something like that back in the day, you know? And, and he got the bug, so I took him to a track. I mean, now all of a sudden, this is, you know, all consuming for us as a family. You know, and, and I know it would be appealing to me, and I know our community would probably find it appealing, and...
I would say we'd be receptive.
We get back to your original question.
We'd be receptive if you could figure it out.
Say again?
We'd be receptive if you could figure it out.
Yeah, I didn't know, in, in terms of property, like I mentioned in the email, I don't know what, where timelines are and that sort of thing. We mentioned the business park or...
There's no properties left in the business park.
And there's that big dirt.
But that's, that's passive recreation only because it's environmentally sensitive.
And, and...
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah, they have great ideas, but, yeah, that's what I had told you in the email, that a lot of the properties were already environmentally sensitive or not able to be built on because the business park is already built out. So there's nothing left there. Behind the business park is all, already the state has said there's no further expansion.
Existing parks, would it be possible to do something?
An existing park?
On an existing park? It's not a huge facility, if you look, like at Egg Harbor.
Then we'd have to take away fields from the sporting organizations, it's already maxed out.
Saying something like the skate park, but...
Yeah, I mean, where Egg Harbor fits in is right next to the, you know, a couple of ice rinks. It's not massive.
Back when I was mayor, and that was 10-something years ago, I was corresponding, there are associations, RV, you know, and those, you know, I know that they were looking in this area, and there were so many roadblocks, but that's where you would start.
Yeah.
You know, get together with association, you know, because they would have the...
Next to the area. You're trying to find out what you're, you know, what you're going to have to deal with.
They would have the wherewithal to determine if there is a location in this town or another municipality, but that's where you would start with, with, and, and you know there are many, many organized associations, you know, and that's where you would, you know, my recommendation would be.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Barry?
Hello, Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue, good evening. I have a question about one of the items on the agenda, 2020-16, the reappropriation of excess bond fees. Was this an unexpected cost, or was it something that slipped through in the budget, or...
No, it wasn't unexpected cost, it's just that what we had provided in the budget and what we could get down to negotiating prices for the radios did not come in at the 910.
So the price was more than you had expected when you put the budget together?
Once we sat down, and, yeah, and listen, it started out at $2.9 million for those radios, and we've gotten them down to about 1.2 right now.
Yeah, I just didn't understand why, it seemed like an emergency.
Yeah, so what we put in the budget already...
So to get the extra money, you had to grab money from, from old bonds that were sitting out there, basically, is the story?
Yep.
Yes.
All right.